And will you please rise for the prayer and invocation to be given by Councilmember Mortimer.
If it's alright folks, I'd like to take just a second of silence for those that we lost here in our state. Father God, our hearts are heavy and grieved today because of the loss of so many that we've seen here in our beautiful state. Father, I ask you to wrap your loving arms around those families and those friends that have lost loved ones. I ask you, Lord, to send your Holy Spirit to rain down upon them and just give them the comfort and the peace that they truly need at this particular time. And Father, I ask that you just watch over, put a hedge around those first responders that are there today that are trying to recover and save lives. I ask you to be with them both physically and mentally as they go through this because it's such a time. And Father, for each and every one of us as we go through things today here in our lives, may we always be mindful that you're there with us. And Lord, I ask you now to, as I think about those first responders, I think about our police, our fire, and our medical help. Lord, I pray that you just put a hedge around them and their families, keep them protected and safe, and just let them know how important they are to us in our lives. And I thank you for them. And Lord Jesus, now, I ask you, as we take this time today, to do your work here in Orange, Texas. Help us not get ahead of you or behind you because your will is what we want to cover. We want to do it for our families, we want to do it for our community, and we want to do it for your glory. I ask you now to give us the discernment we need so that we can make the wise decisions for it. In Jesus' holy and precious name I do pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Okay, item number three, motion. A, motion finding that the advance posting and notice requirements of Article 9.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all the matters pending ordinances and relations, resolutions on the agenda and that reading of such items be confined to the captions as agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. I have a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Ms. Burks?
Aye.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter? Ms. Salter? Motion passes. Item number four, citizens' comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council, consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify staff prior to the start of the meeting. On my list I have Ray Bagley. Please take the podium and state your name and address for us, please. And you have three minutes.
My name is Ray Bagley, address is 115 County Road 4214, Orange, Texas 77632. I've been living in Orange County all my life right now. I'm at the south end of Newton County, but I come today to talk to the council about the Jet Cemetery. It's special to me. I try to take care of the section next to the Brown Center over fifty feet or seventy-five. That section is my mother-in-law's family's burial site, Cecil Blum, and her, all of her family's buried there, and that's where she's going to be laid to rest. So that, that's why that Jet Cemetery is so special to me. And it's overgrown, a lot of people don't even know it exists. I went out there July the third to, I went by the second, and it was so, the whole place was overgrown. Well, I went the third, it Thursday, to do my little section to get it back for the holidays and look good for Orange. And I was lucky that day, on the four end, I go down around Lindenwood, and I look back and come back to my parking spot, right in front of the Brown Center. And the Sheriff's Department was down there with a vehicle and, two vehicles and a van. And that was on the other end. And so, I said, well, maybe they're going to do a little bit down there. Well, I get started, and I can keep hearing them back there, when I get through morning, they're getting closer, and I'm weed eating, and they're on me. And hats off to the Orange County Sheriff's Department for doing a wonderful job with the trustee. The guys were all right by me, I told them all, thank you for your help, they were nice to me. I didn't feel threatened at any time by them. But I'd like to get something rolling, if y'all could lead me in the right direction, where I need to go. I'm getting older, I can't do it, I'm fixing to turn seventy-two, it's all I can do to go out there and take care of that acre and a half or whatever it is. So if y'all could lead me in a direction to get Jet Cemetery on the list, where people see it and love it like I do, and it's right next to the beautiful Brown Center. If you could, contact me, my phone number is (409) 882-1422, and just lead me to the right direction, if y'all can, because it's so special. And I follow up with my time, thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. That's all I have on my list, does anyone else like to address council? Please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Olive Elkins, 604 Balsa Wood Lane. The last time I spoke at the council was to inform you of an, of an immigrations and customs enforcement raid that happened here in Orange. And today I would like to give an example of what we could do to help prevent that. And I think we can use the example of Hayes County, just outside of Austin. The Hayes County Commissioners Court passed a resolution essentially requiring organizations like ICE to be more transparent with their actions in the county. The resolution that they passed requires, quote, "Any individuals involved in the physical custody or transport of persons to wear body cameras, display visible name identification, wear clear organizational insignia, and they cannot wear face coverings except when medically necessary." Furthermore, it stipulates that any agency or organization operating within their jurisdiction must provide a clear, consistent, and constitutionally sound process for the handling of individuals, including timely and transparent notification detailing who was taken, under what authority, where they were transported, and why such actions were undertaken. To support that point, they refer to the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, which says, the Fourteenth Amendment says, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." And they cite cases like Zodvidus v. Davis and Plyer v. Doe, which affirm that this statement applies to all people on American soil, not just citizens. And I can provide a link to the full text of this resolution after the meeting, if anybody would like to approach me for that. They, they state that their passing of this resolution is a patriotic act of fidelity to defend their oath to the Constitution, and I agree. Not only is it moral, but it's constitutionally bulletproof. And if we were to pass something similar like that here, that would make me very proud to be a citizen of Orange. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Alright, I'll move on to agenda item number five, city announcements, A, city staff announcements and city events.
Good morning, Mayor, Pro-Tam, and Council. The CVB team would just like to extend our sincere thanks to the support staff and volunteers who helped us this past weekend, or this past Friday, who helped make the July Fourth event a success. We had a great turnout at the event and a lot of positive comments from the community so far. So, next up, we're already preparing for our fifth annual Orange Topor Festival. So go ahead and save the date for October 3rd through the 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Good morning, Mayor, Pro-Tam, and Council. I'm just here to give you a little update on the rec. We just recently had our summer kids camp from May 27th to June 27th, it was a five-week camp. Just basically getting the kids out the house, getting them active, teaching them basic skills of the certain sports that we provide in the rec. We had about fifty kids sign up, so that was a blast. Also, we have our pickleball tournament coming up July 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That is the beginner, intermediate, and advanced bracket. It's a first and second place prize for each bracket. And that's pretty much it. I was just coming to give you guys a little upcoming and what's to come and what passed about the rec. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Any other staff? Alright, we'll move on to item, agenda item number six, consent agenda. Item A, May 28th, 2025, planning and zoning, commission special call meeting. Item B, June 10th, 2025, planning and zoning commission special call meeting minutes. Item C, June 10th, 2025, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. And item D, June 25th, 2025, regular council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven, ordinances. A, final reading, consider ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, consenting to the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation petition and resolution regarding application for creation of the Orange Field Special Utility District setting forth other matters related to therefore, and providing that this ordinance shall become effective from and after its passage and adoption. First reading was June the 24th, 25. Mr. Goodson?
Thank you. Again, in order for the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation to convert to a special utility district, they have to secure the consent of any entity in which they fall in their jurisdiction. And for the benefit of the council and for the audience, this still requires affirmative vote of the members of the Orange Field Water Supply Corporation to actually accomplish the conversion. So this is the preliminary step, and I know that they would appreciate the consideration.
Any questions or comments from council? Do I have a motion? Have a motion, a second? Any further discussion or concerns on this item? Alright, start voting, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Ms. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item eight, resolutions, final reading. Consider resolution approving EDC infrastructure grant agreement with USG Paper LLC 1750 IP Way, Orange, Texas 77632. Incentives are in amount not to exceed $200,000 per year over a two-year period, with a total amount not to exceed $400,000 for the purpose of economic development. First reading was June the 24th, 2025. Mr. Trehan?
Yes, so final action step in terms of meeting all the public action steps to formally execute this agreement. So once you formally vote on it, we can move forward with getting the actual agreement signed, and the funds are encumbered and designated for USG Paper to move forward with the on-site infrastructure improvements for the project. I'll turn it back over to you.
Any questions for Mr. Trehan? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item A, B, consider resolution awarding contracts to Cadence Equipment Finance for the lease purchase financing for a Peterbilt dump truck at the mount not to exceed $160,000 for a term of five years. Ms. Ito?
Yes, good morning. So, Street and Drainage has this dump truck on order, it was in the budget, it's already budgeted, but we need to acquire financing, so we've done a RFP, and unfortunately, we got one proposal. However, the proposer was a company that we have experience with, we've got several things financed with them, so we're pleased with that. So, and their terms were very comparable with the market right now, so staff recommends awarding our financing contract to Cadence Equipment Finance.
Any questions for Ms. Ito or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Ms. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item A, C, consider resolution entering an agreement with Energy Texas for Power through Energy Reliant Service allowing secure backup power generation at wastewater treatment plant number one and wastewater treatment plant number two. Mr. Jack?
Good morning, Mayor, Pro-Tam, Council. I'm here to bring the Power Through proposal, which we've been talking about for a while, to you for consideration. Here we've got Jim Mullane from Entergy, the regional Entergy representative, as well as Greg Gilbo, who's in charge of the Power Through program for Entergy itself. Let me start by saying that, what is Power Through? Power Through is a program that Entergy has begun to assure power resilience and cost-sharing solutions both for commercial and government entities, as well as themselves, and the power grid for the public. What it basically does is, it allows Entergy to install a large-capacity generator at specific sites that will serve emergency needs for that customer, and during peak hour, will, can, can support the grid as power demands increase, such as we have now with a very heated summer, air conditioners running. So, by doing a cost-sharing between the host, or whoever that may be, in this case, the city, and Entergy helps them maintain the grid better, at a lower cost, helps us to get the emergency power that we need. We are proposing two generators at the wastewater treatment plant. Why? The wastewater treatment plant right now averages about three, about three million gallons a day that we treat that comes through the city. During emergency times, flooding and things like that, we can see that almost double to a peak of around six million gallons per day. The capacity of the plant right now is right around seven million gallons a day. We have never had backup power at the wastewater treatment plants. The only time that we have was during Harvey, and it took us seven days to get an emergency generator in place to restore power there, thanks to our friends at Entergy. TCQ requires us to have a backup power under their current regulations, but the age of the wastewater treatment plant allows us to be grandfather under another clause, which Entergy supports us with, with having multiple power feeds to the wastewater treatment plant right now. So when one grid goes down, we can switch over to another grid. But we've never had emergency power. We're, we're proposing two generators, a one-megawatt generator and a 500 KV generator, which is the same size as we have at the police department, so that we can run the wastewater treatment plant during the case of an emergency or whenever power is unavailable from Entergy. How much power are we talking about? Those two combined generators are enough to run the air conditioning units in five to ten full subdivisions. That's how much power we need there. So, the Entergy's Power Through program has some bonuses, if you will. There's no upfront cost to the city to do this. We cost-share all the implementation costs with Entergy. In that cost-sharing, the operations and maintenance, the natural gas is included with the monthly payback rate that we'll pay for it, and those payments will be added to the monthly usage bills. This program is not available to residential customers because Entergy is trying to offset their building costs by putting in large generators. Once the payback is complete, we would be responsible for approximately $1,400 a month for the operations and maintenance of those generators. How do they develop our cost? There is an overall solution cost that they estimate, and that they construct and build, build out. The amount of savings that they can receive from that build-out, they will subtract from that total amount, leaving what they call the host amount, or what the cost to the city would be. So here's the breakdown of the proposal. The total cost of the solution to Entergy is $2.3 million, of which the cost-sharing amount to the city would be a little over $900,000. If we were to look at a one-year, five-year, ten-year, or twenty-year recovery, you can see at the bottom what the monthly payments would be by the city in this cost-sharing agreement. Eighty-two thousand if we were to recover the nine-hundred thousand in one year, twenty thousand a month, five years, twelve thousand a month, ten years, twenty years would be about nine thousand dollars a month. Public Works will be suggesting and recommending a ten-year term for this implementation. How do we pay for that? Well, if you look at the 2.3 million and our forty percent contribution, nine hundred thousand, if you look at the interest rates that Entergy will be charging us, which is defined by the state, or the Texas Public Utilities Commission determines those rates. Those would be the payback amounts that we would pay under each individual term. Again, Public Works suggesting a ten-year recovery period of what we have up there. To pay for, pay for this proposal, all the funding would come out of the water and sewer accounts. There would be no funding coming out of the general fund, there would be no taxes that would go toward, tax revenue that would go towards this. It would all be driven by the enterprise fund, which is a fee-based fund. We would propose using one-third of our yearly revenues that are coming out of our dump station. Right now, we're collecting somewhere around $300,000 a year at the dump station, so we take a hundred thousand dollars a year out of that to put towards this payback, as well as delaying some of our lift station rehabilitation. Right now, we're on about a ten-year cycle to replace all of our, rehabilitate all of our lift stations. We would need to stretch that out a little bit, move some of those funds over to this in order to have emergency power at the wastewater treatment plant. So, in this situation, you can see there'd be a small balance left after a ten-year recovery period. If we went to a twenty-year, there'd be zero balance, but we'd pay significantly more overall, over that period of time. So again, the Public Works recommendation for the Power Through agreement is to enter into the agreement for a ten-year recovery payment with a monthly payment of about $12,500. The benefits, clearly, we get backup power, which is something we've never had, which also brings us to the current TCQ requirements. It also provides local resiliency to the power grid in that entire area, which is the downtown Cove area. We also see benefits from this. We would suggest paying for it from the enterprise fund, which is water and sewer revenue. General funds will not be impacted, and it does not use any tax revenue. This is an example of, just as I end the presentation, Entergy's been a great partner with us over the years at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a great opportunity for us to install something we've long needed at forty percent of the, of the capital cost and cost-sharing program with Energy. It's a great program, if all goes well, we will be the poster child for the entire state for this program when it comes to local governments. We've been number one on their list for quite some time in this program, as they've advanced this program, and we're excited about bringing it to you and getting your, getting your adoption of this. Anything that you would like to add, Jim? Have I missed anything?
I'm very excited about this, I know that that facility is of utmost importance to the city, and always kind of jokingly say during a storm, it's the very first place I get a call about and the very first place we give attention to because of the importance to the city and infrastructure. So this is just an idea, but I think for both us as a company, you know, speaking to the city.
Okay, Craig, Craig, nevermind, I want to keep this straight with everyone out here. The enterprise fund is, water and sewer works like a company, it's not part of your tax dollars. So enterprise fund builds up as we take in money for the meters, for the sewer, and that's what they're taking out of. It's not coming out of your property tax, am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, how, what's the lifespan of this generator?
Lifespan of generators generally twenty years.
Okay. Do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Jack from council?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we say two generators, right?
There will be two generators, yes. One, large generator to support the plant's mechanics. A second generator which will support the instrumentation, the electrical systems that run the mechanical portions, if you will. As you can imagine, we have some very large motors that run the, that, the operations of the plant, the pumps, the motors that spin, the agitators that we have, the pumps that pump air into the system so that it can have oxygen to operate. So, that power supply is much greater than the other power supply that lights the lights, runs the computers, such as that.
Reason why I was asking, I was wondering if there's a type of generator that, that could do it all, you know, like one and stuff.
We did consult with Entergy in that regard, the Entergy actually came out with our technical staff, went through our electrical systems on-site, evaluated what we have, and this was the most cost-efficient solution for both of us. And clearly, since Entergy is fronting all the cost, they want the most economical solution as well as a business.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So total maintenance and upkeep will be done by?
All done by Entergy, yes.
Thank you.
On the, on the financing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is this a fixed, going to be a fixed rate from beginning, or is it going to be a flooded rate with an annual reset? Or what are we looking at?
It's a fixed rate, it's sort of like a lease, and it is fixed by state code. Entergy actually had to go to the utility commission and get approval for this program, which also included the rate structure.
So after it's paid completely off, who do we go outside to get additional warranty?
That is all covered by Entergy. It'll be Entergy's generator to operate, maintain, and work with.
Even after we pay?
Even after we finish the recovery period, yes.
During peak periods, this automatically transfer over to your lines? We're doing it for peak periods as well?
Yeah, there's automatic transfers.
It's automatic transfers, we should send it to the lines?
You may have told us that, Mr., but how quickly is this installed?
Right now, the lead time on, the long lead time is the largest generator, and right now that, we're thinking fifty weeks, I think, on the big generator, to actually get it. But, the nice part again about this is, since we're working with Entergy, Entergy's ability to, we'll say, expedite things is much greater than our ability.
Did you say fifty weeks?
Fifty weeks.
An uptick, huh?
It's a long time, generators are in very strong demand right now.
I'd just like to say, we have, as we all know, very many climate hazardous disasters in our community. And, and I applaud Entergy and our city staff, this leads the way, you know? And it is for our community, it's for the betterment of all of our citizens, and I really applaud you for what you're doing to move us forward, to help us be safe in our community.
Some like to motion on this?
I'm making a motion.
I knew you would. In a second? Okay, Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Adam, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, city manager report. Item B, city council report, starting at my left, Ms. McKenna?
Happy fourth, late on the eighth, happy fourth on the eighth. Hope everybody had a great time, congratulations. Congratulations to all the city staff who did a outstanding job once again to fly it through the roof. So, and thanks to all of you all for being present today.
Ms. Burks?
Yes, I'm going to do a plug for OCP, our Young People's Workshop. Um, we, everybody knows that OCP was closed for about eight years, and we reopened, and we, it's our first um, um, children's workshop, it went through the month of June, and they're, they're, they're doing a show. We ended up with thirty-three kids in this workshop, and so, um, the show will begin Thursday, and Thursday, Friday, Saturday, week, and Sunday. The show starts at seven thirty-seven, so the entire theater will be ran by the children this four days, so, including the lights, the sound, everything.
Wow.
So...
That's awesome.
Yes, so, anyway, come out and support OCP and the Young Children's Workshop. Thanks.
Yeah. I have no words.
I just want to thank everybody for, for all that you've been coming out and all the city staff. Thank you.
Okay, I'll end with it. Um, as of last night, Currie County has lost more than one hundred souls. Uh, the Little Cypress Lions Club has checked to see what we could do. A truck has been sent from Orange to there. Now, they're asking that no longer we send supplies, that we send cash donations, and if you want to go uh research, be careful who you're sending money to. The Orange Lions International has a fund set up, and they will get it to the correct people or a church that you may know up there, but they're asking no longer send trucks right now, they can't receive them. That's all I have for today. So, now, we'll be uh going on number ten, adjourning to close executive session deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. One deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as authorized by section five-five-one dot zero seven-two. Deliberation about real property, First Baptist Church, Orange, access easement seven-six-three-seven Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Orange, Texas. So, if you're not involved with this um issue, you may step outside to the library, and then when re, reconvene, you can come in and we'll close the formal meeting. Welcome back. I think that was the shortest executive session we've ever had. Item number eleven, reconvene in open session. Item A, take action as necessary regarding item ten A-one. Consider resolution entering to agreement with First Baptist Church, Orange, for ten dollars for a property access easement for a second entrance. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, item number twelve, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.